Termination of quorum.
Mr. Peterman? Mr. Servan?
Present.
Mrs. Carter?
Here.
Mr. Galvry?
Here.
Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Jester?
Here.
So you have seven yeses in favor of approving tonight's agenda.
Thank you very much. Also, commissioners, in front of you, you have the agenda for tonight. I'll entertain a motion in a second to approve it.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Sarah, call the commission.
Mr. Peterman?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Servan?
Yes, to approve.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Galvry?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Jester?
Yes, to approve.
So you have seven yeses in favor of approving tonight's agenda.
Also, commissioners, you have a copy of the minutes for April 10th, 2025. If there's no additions or corrections, I will once again entertain a motion for approval.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Sarah, call the commission.
Mr. Peterman?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Servan?
Yes, to approve.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Galvry?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Jester?
Yes, to approve.
So you have seven yeses in favor of approving the minutes of April 10th.
Next, you see on the agenda, the levy court action, along with our recommendations. If you have any questions on that, please contact the planning office. We'll now get into, we have no old business, so we'll get into the new business for tonight. First is a presentation by Mr. Philip Barnes of the University of Delaware regarding the inclusion of community resiliency and climate change. Sir, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everybody. I don't have a presentation, but I do want to take this opportunity to speak with you for a moment on a bill. My name is Philip Barnes. I'm from the Institute for Public Administration at the University of Delaware. We are a applied public service research center at UD. And one of the projects that I'm working on involves this bill, SB 237, which passed the General Assembly last year. It was signed by the governor late last year. And essentially what it does, it requires, as a point of clarification, I was not involved in the development of this bill in any way, right? So what it does, it requires the counties and municipalities with populations over 2,000 to incorporate climate change and resiliency into their comprehensive development plans. The bill takes effect November 2026, and I believe your comp plan is due shortly thereafter. So this is something that the county will be required to include in the comp plan. Right now, the guidelines for what that actually looks like have not been established. So there is time. And part of what this effort is, the project that I'm involved with, is to visit planning commissioners across the state to just briefly introduce the legislation that's been passed and to get feedback from you all. And what I intend to do is then compile that feedback into a summary that will then be presented to the state as they develop their guidelines for, I don't want to say complying, but for including climate change and following what the new legislation says. So I just read here from the bill. It says there's two main components for what the new comp plan requirements include. One is on future land use primarily, and the other primarily is on housing. There are some other small things in there, but they're mostly land use and housing. So it says, "The future land use plan must reflect strategies which consider community resiliency and reduce vulnerability of property, agriculture, infrastructure, and cultural and natural resources to the impacts of climate change, including sea level rise, changes in rainfall patterns, and extreme weather events. The strategies must be informed by the Delaware Climate Action Plan and implementation reports as amended and in consultation with state planning, off-state planning coordination." So it does mention in there the state's climate action plan, which Denrec first released in 2021, I believe. I know they are in the process right now of updating that. So when this bill does take effect, there will be a new version of that climate action plan available. So. And then the second thing is, as I mentioned, on the housing piece. It says, "For anticipated growth scenarios must be in conformance with the strategies reflected in that future land use plan and encourage development of new housing growth away from areas vulnerable to inland and coastal flooding." So that is what the legislation says. What that actually looks like in terms of implementation and practice in your comp plan, again, is those guidelines have not been established. And so what I'm here to do and gonna visit other planning commissioners around the state, as I mentioned, is to just communicate this information and then hear back from you about any maybe concerns that you have, needs, you know, things that could be developed or implemented to assess, or any feedback that you have that may inform the development of those guidelines, which I believe will probably happen later this fall.
So can I ask you something, plain language?
Yep.
When it comes back to us, will Denrec be able to hold up projects if they don't initiate whatever you're talking about through this Senate bill?
So that I can't speculate on right now. Yeah.
Because I read that, I mean, it's quite a lengthy document that you had or that you sent us. It has the blue and white sheets to it, and I read, I read the most of it. I had to get my Funk and Wagner out to see what some of the words meant in it, but that's neither here nor there, because I majored in civil engineering, not any kind of English languages. But so you really don't know what it's going to do to affect us in the bottom line until these issues are addressed by the unit, does this go through the university?
Those guidelines are going to be developed by state planning, right? The state planning has the statutory responsibility to develop those guidelines. There's already a comp plan checklist and a set of guidelines that state planning has developed, and this is not a part of those previous guidelines because the bill was just signed. So they will develop those guidelines.
That's very, very interesting. Can I open it up to the commissioners?
Please.
See if you have any questions?
Yes.
Denise?
So is Kent County going to be the first one to have the new comp plan that is impacted by this?
I can answer that.
We'll be in a group. It's, we're among the first. Ours is doing 28, but a number are. And my other question is, is what you are doing within the state?
Yes.
Are there other states in the nation that are doing something that would be comparable to this?
There are other states that have, I know the state of Washington has actually included or required their municipalities to do something similar. Yeah. I haven't looked too deeply into it. It's one of the things that I intend to do later to help facilitate this, but I do know that Washington is one of those states.
Right. Well, I mean, if they're ahead of where Delaware is, I mean, I don't believe in reinventing the wheel, so yeah. What about other countries?
Planning looks different in other countries, depending on where you are, but, you know, I mean, is planning for climate change happening? Yes. Yeah. Yes. Formally and informally, certainly. Yeah.
Commissioner Galvry?
Just, I know you won't be able to actually probably answer these, but you said you want input, and it's kind of premature, it seems, for input from this committee because we have to actually see how this ends up manifesting in the comp plan and what levy court ends up choosing to do and what that changes that it has to zoning and coding, and ultimately that it will come before us and we'll be weighing in on something that is now in those other documents that we actually need in order to make our decision. But since you asked, I am curious, so, you know, for like coastal resiliency, for example, so District 3, for example, most of the areas is outside the growth zone because it's primarily marsh, but that doesn't mean that we don't have certain approved conditions there. Solar farms, for example, we've been approving a lot of those outside the growth zone in District 3 areas. We've got agriculture in these areas. I'm just curious as to, when we look at resiliency, how that ends up ultimately affecting growth of any kind, but most specifically, I'm concerned about how it affects our farmers. When we're looking at resiliency, we might think immediately that we're not putting in homes in this particular area, but we might be actually saying that a farmer can't actually farm a particular area because it's going to be inundated with water at a certain point in time, so we want to start backing away from those areas. Or we've got coastal areas like Pickering Beach, which is, you know, an issue there. Actually, all of our coastal communities, Bowers, Lipsick, and all that, are affected by coastal change, sea level rise. So I'm just wondering who's ultimately making these decisions that these communities and people are going to have to live by, and are they going to be open to public input?
Well, this only governs the comp plan. So the comp plan, you know, it forms the basis for your, the development of your county over the next 10 years.
But somebody actually puts something in that comp plan that ends up other people have to live by, and I'm just, I'm just wondering if these people are, how that, Sarah, is that going to be different this time around when they're making up the comp plan? Or, I mean, where are the experts coming from that weigh in on this? And do we have an ability as a community, as a public, not just this committee here, to push back against what's being said?
There are always opportunities for public input when it comes to a comprehensive plan. We typically rely on the state's climate action plan. Because just because the General Assembly put something into law, doesn't mean we weren't already doing some of it. Your point about agriculture, because the most, much of the area of the county impacted by the threat of climate change and sea level rise is outside our growth zone. There's not a threat of new development. There is a threat to agriculture, and I can honestly say I don't know the county's role when it comes to that, right? Agriculture is a land use that obviously we're not going to stop, but if farms start being inundated and they can't produce, I think solutions there are beyond the capabilities of the county. Putting something in a comp plan doesn't solve a problem, right? And I think it's important to always keep that in mind. But yes, we will engage with Denrec primarily when it comes to this issue, and it will be an open public process.
Great. Thank you.
I think Mr. Davis is next.
Well, a little, I guess, confused in some degree. Yeah, this climate issue started with Al Gore. You know, you have scientists that agree with it, you have scientists that disagree with it. So I guess this was probably promoted by EPA. Am I right or wrong on that?
It was promoted by the General Assembly. The bill was.
But that's a law Delaware's starting, is it a, is it a, attached to a federal piece of legislation that has passed?
No. No.
So explain to me, because I did it my entire life. Explain to me, I haven't got this yet, I haven't heard it. What is your bottom line and what is the mission that you expect to accomplish? Is it a heat problem? Is it more storms that we're having? Is it flooding? What impact does it have on the type of homes that we build? If you can give me a quick scenario, because I really haven't got, I haven't digested exactly what you're trying to do, or not so much you, but this program. So before I'd ever go for it, there's a lot of things I got to ask, and he brought up the farming industry. So I don't know whether you're talking about houses, I don't know whether you're talking about, I don't know what you're talking about, very blunt about it.
Yeah.
So maybe you can kind of give me a little update on, what is the mission, what do you expect to accomplish? You expect the climate to be cooler? People say, well, you know, the glaciers are melting, you know, and the sea level. I did a report about 10 years ago about the tidal waters or tributaries are rising, and I believe that. But I don't quite know what you're going to do to solve the problem because that's something that just happens naturally. And we're not the only problem who's causing these climate issues. We talk about ourselves. I'm really surprised that the state's taking this on if the United States itself is not taking it on, because you take Japan and some of those other countries that have pollution that they claim is involved with the climate issue, we're not doing nothing about that. But they want to come in here, to Delaware, and say, you got to do this, this, and this, when they ought to be looking at how the things swift over to across the United States. We end up, I'm just a little confused, and I'm not trying to be a smartypants. You got to tell me what the bottom line is, what you're going to do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. So from my understanding of what the, so there's two things. There's the climate impact, right? So what, you know, if the predictions or the expectations for climate change happen, what does that mean? And then what do you do about that? So what are the threats, and then what do you do about that? So the challenges with climate change, my understanding is that it will be warmer. Two primary things, I think, the biggest impact for the county. One, it will be warmer, and two, it will be wetter. So when it warms up, the air can hold more moisture, and so you get more intense storms, for example. So your 100-year floodplain, I don't want to get too technical, but for example, your 100-year floodplain, which was drawn based on the chance of happening once every 100 years, might be a 50-year floodplain in the future because that precipitation, right? When it rains, it's more intense. So the county will likely experience more flooding and higher temperatures. Now, the legislation does not prescribe, this is what you need to do about it, but it does say to avoid areas, for example, avoid developing in those areas. I'm just reading between the lines, right? I'm just trying to give my own interpretation of this. Try to avoid those areas that are going to be wetter, for example. Yeah? That may have a higher chance of flooding.
Yeah.
So how you choose to do the, excuse me, but how you choose to do that, right, is up to you, the mechanisms that, it's agnostic on that, but it says that's what you're trying to do.
Yeah, I just want to see things that are scientific and not because somebody got some federal grant money coming in here and making it difficult for people who have to do this, and this, and this, and we're overburdened with federal money coming in, and once you get into it, you're obligated to it. So I look, I try to look at these things closer, and apparently there's nothing on the federal lever, level, including you, that I could even research why Delaware's tying into it. Thank you.
I want to ask, Mr. Servan is on the phone. He's another commissioner. He's not here presently, nobody's on the phone. Does he have any questions for this gentleman?
I do not have any questions at this time. Thanks.
Mr. Mills, do you have any questions for this gentleman?
Yes, I do have one question, because I'm certainly involved in the agriculture industry, and I echo the questions that Mr. Garvey said, and when it comes to impacting the agriculture industry and the agriculture land is, joins the, may I say, the coastline more than anywhere else. I know we do control the housing already now that are being developed in those areas. That's under control. But when it comes to whatever they decide they want to do affecting the farmers, I'm going to definitely object to it, that's for sure, because the prime farmland is along these coastlands, coastlines. And when it comes affecting that and saying, hey, state comes along and says, well, we don't want you till that because it could flood sometime, you can't do that, that's all. It's just not going to happen. So thank you. I know you can't answer those questions now, but just let you know where the agriculture, my thoughts on agriculture stand, that's where it's at. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think also being in the ag, like everybody else is here, there's a lot of restrictions already in place, like with pesticides and herbicides and all like that, which could affect the, you know, world climate. But there's also things like out there, when you have a low area, like a whale wall or something like that, you're not allowed, if you don't till it within three years, you lose the abilities to till it. I don't know if you know about those kind of regulations in the ag sector. But being in ag all my life, there is restrictions enough, like Mr. Mills says, it's a very difficult industry, and I don't know how much more you can restrict it, because we also look at housing. They're not allowed in environmental impact areas like wetlands and all like that. So I can see a lot of overlap possibly in what we're already presently doing and what's going to be required, but we'll just have to take a look at it. We'll have to see what it does and how it is. So I just wanted you to let, you know, my point of view, and we'll see how we progress from here. Denise, you have one more question?
Well, I just wanted to clarify, you don't have many specifics for us because the bill got passed, but the committees or whoever are going to enact the specifics haven't really started.
That's correct.
So I know, obviously, Denrec's involved.
Yes, Denrec will be involved, yes.
But will, like, even Del Dot be involved?
Yes.
Because they better be.
Yes. Yes, Del Dot will be involved. I mean, it involves housing, and Del Dot builds the roads to those developments. So yes, Del Dot will certainly be involved as well. And the public will be involved. I want to make this very clear as well. The development of those future guidelines, right, is not going to be behind some closed doors, and this is your only opportunity to provide input. This is, I recognize that this was going to happen, and so as part of this project, I'm trying to be proactive, to gather your input, to bring back and amplify your voices now early, so that instead of later in the process. That's the intent here, right?
Protect the farmers, I think, is the message you're getting from up here. Not so concerned about the houses on Pickering Beach. They're going to go sooner or later, but the farmland is something that is a diminishing resource for a lot of reasons, but that's something that we're going to have to be sensitive to.
I think that the uniqueness of each of the counties, they are all so different that I know that the state planning will take all that sort of thing, and Denrec will take all that into consideration, but we really are, I feel, very, very different from each other. And yes, all of us sitting up here are very much concerned for farming.
Do you work with the ag department also? Are they putting input into this?
No. I have not been involved with ag. Yeah.
So the representative, the one that's actually physically working on it now is Denrec?
I'm sorry?
Denrec is the one that's possibly putting together regulations?
No, there's no, these are not regulations. I want to be very clear. What will be developed are guidelines, guidelines, not prescriptive regulations, but guidelines on how to align your comprehensive development plan with the new language that was passed by the General Assembly.
Guidelines, though, are a slippery slope. It's the first step to regulations.
Well, that's.
So, no, I'm just saying, so it's important that we voice opinions while guidelines are being formed, because ultimately, guidelines will be the foundation of a regulation or a policy. So I know it says, well, they're just guidelines right now, so everybody doesn't have to worry about it, but when I hear the word guidelines, all I see is the first step towards a regulation. So guidelines are very important, that there be input.
Yeah.
Exactly right, because once they get in place, people don't have erasers to modify them. It just seems like, you know, so we appreciate, I think that concludes our part of it. Sarah, did you have anything you wanted to add? At least him? Cut the mic off.
No, I don't, except thank you for coming and getting the conversation started. And if I could just add on again to the question about agriculture, I have a hard time imagining there would ever come out of this process any kind of recommendation that would hinder agriculture further, my bigger concern. And it's, I likely won't see it in my career, but with the inundation, at some point, farmers along the coast are not going to be able to farm part of their property. And at least to my mind, the conversation to start having, perhaps with the Department of Agriculture, is, how do you, what options are there then for those landowners, right? So I think that's just a good conversation to keep having in the ag community.
I think Mr. Davis has one closing.
I just want to say one thing that I find so interesting. You know, we're talking about climate, this whole environmental issues, marshes, tributaries, clean water acts. You go down to Dewey Beach, what do you think they're doing down there? They're putting more houses out in the damn marsh. Now, we can't have it both ways, you know? You're disturbing all the marshes, putting places out there because people go out a lot of money, they're making a lot of money. So they're ruining our environment. Nobody says nothing about that. So that's how I look at it. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's going to be a difficult time.
Yeah.
Being we're a small state, and we're really politically driven.
Yep.
You know how politics gets into just about everything.
Certainly.
So good luck with what you want to do, and I hope as we get the continued information, you'll pass it on, and Sarah will pass it on to us, whatever needs to be done. But thank you for coming tonight, and we appreciate what you said.
Thank you very much. And I just want to recap to make sure I've captured your comments, because these are important points, and I want to make sure I get them accurately. So Mr. Jester, you commented that you're concerned that this may lead to Denrec holding up individual projects or things along that nature. Obviously, concerns about agriculture, and one of the things, you know, guidelines, first step towards regulation, so there's concerns that this is a slippery slope. Also, I wrote down, because I'm not sure that the Department of Agriculture will be included in those conversations on the development of the guidelines, but that they should be, that should be a recommendation. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Exactly. I appreciate that point.
Appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, too. Good luck. I usually say at this point, good luck with your project.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah.
Next on our agenda tonight is CS-15-05, Delaware turf sport complex, request for conditional use with site plan approval to construct three additional structures totaling 9,997 plus or minus square feet located outside the growth zone overlay district. I will now turn it over to the commissioners. Mr. Galvry?
I move that the Regional Planning Commission recommend conditional approval of application CS-15-05, a conditional use site plan for three additional structures totaling 9,997 square feet located outside the growth zone overlay district. This is based on Exhibit A, staff recommendations report dated May 1, 2025. Exhibit B, public hearing testimony dated May 1, 2025, and the findings affect that: A, the subject site is zoned AC agricultural conservation, and Subchapter 205-53 permits high-intensity commercial recreational facilities as a conditional use. B, the location is appropriate and not in conflict with the comprehensive plan. C, the public health, safety, and general welfare will not be adversely affected. Pursuant to Chapters 187 and 205 of the Kent County Code and pursuant to 9 Delaware Code Subchapter 4802 and 4811, the commission has reviewed the application in the May 1, 2025 staff recommendation report, and furthermore, as part of this approval, the applicant shall comply with all staff and agency requirements as described in the May 1, 2025 staff recommendation report.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Denise, second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Sarah, call the.
Mr. Peterman?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Servan?
Yes, to approve.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Galvry?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Jester?
Yes, to approve.
You have seven yeses in favor of recommending conditional approval of application CS-15-05.
Thank you for the application, and good luck with your project. Next on the agenda tonight, excuse me, is S-25-04, State of Delaware, Denrec, Little Creek Wildlife, request for a site plan approval to construct five additional structures totaling 45,790 plus or minus square feet located outside the growth zone with improvements located outside the growth zone overlay district. I will now turn it over to commissioners. I will now turn it over to commissioners, somebody I'd like to make a motion? Yeah? Does anybody have any questions about, or need anything answered? If not, Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President, I move the Regional Planning Commission grant of conditional approval of application S-25-04, a site plan for five additional structures totaling 45,700 square feet, excuse me, located outside the growth zone, including approval of the waiver from 187-60A and B requiring frontage sidewalks, and 187-74D to permit planting of one-inch calipar trees at a rate of 1, or 435 square feet. This is based on Exhibit A, and staff recommendation report of May 8, 2025, and the findings of fact. And I think that's just all I have. I don't have any other, I'm sorry, my mistake. A, the subject site is zoned AC agricultural conservation, and 205-53 permits public services as a permitted use. B, the location is appropriate and not in conflict with the comprehensive plan, and C, the public health, safety, and general welfare will not be adversely affected. Pursuant to Chapters 8, 187, and 205, the Kent County Code, and pursuant to 9 Delaware Chapter 4802 and 4811, Commission has reviewed the application on May 8, 2025, Staff Recommendation Report, and furthermore, as part of this approval, the applicant shall comply with all staff and agency requirements as described in the May 8, 2025 Staff Recommendation Report, including the following recommendations. A, a bike rack, large enough to accommodate at least eight bicycles shall be added to the site plan.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Sarah, call the commission.
Mr. Peterman?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Servon?
Yes, to approve.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Galvery?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Jester?
Yes, to approve.
So you have seven a's in favor of granting conditional approval of the application S-25-04.
Thank you, and good luck with the project. Our next new business tonight is the ordinance LC-25-08, distribution of agriculture products. It was explained to us last week, it was explained to us last week. We, we had a great explanation on it, and it was going to be what it was and how it was going to be done, so now I'll open it up to the commission. Mr. Mills, you want to make the motion?
I'll, I'll make the motion. I move the Regional Planning Commission recommend approval of ordinance LC-25-08, adding distribution of agriculture products as a permitted use with conditionals in the AC agricultural conservation and AR agriculture residential zoning districts. This is based on the use being a benefit to the agriculture industry.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Okay.
Mr. Davis made the second, Sarah, call the commission.
Mr. Peterman?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Servon?
Yes, to approve.
Mrs. Carter? Yes, to approve.
Mr. Galvery?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Jester?
Yes, to approve.
So you have seven a's in favor of recommending approval of ordinance LC-25-08.
Thank you, County, for getting this ordinance in place, I'm glad we're getting it done. We now go down to public comment, I see at least one public out there, I don't know if she'd like to speak or anything like that. That's a good answer, I like that answer. Now we're down to commission comments, anybody else have anything they want to say? Anybody on the phone? Mr. Servon or Mr. Mills?
No, I'm okay, except for the ear, if you could tell me how to get rid of this earache.
Any other business, Sarah, before the commission? Okay, go ahead, Mark, what do you got to say?
Just wanted to check and see if anyone joining us online would like to make public comments at this time, please indicate by raising electronic hand or pressing star three if you're joining us by phone. I see no hands raised online for public comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. We'll now get, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Peterman made the motion, and Mr. Galvery seconded, call the commission.
Mr. Peterman?
Yes, to adjourn.
Mr. Servon?
Yes, to adjourn.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes, to adjourn.
Mr. Galvery?
Yes, to adjourn.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, to adjourn.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, to adjourn.
Mr. Jester?
Yes, to adjourn.
Yes, to adjourn. Thank you all, thank you all for coming tonight.